Good evening and welcome to the zoning board of appeals meeting for July of 2014. Carol, can you please take the roll?
Mr. Crockett, Mr. Dillon.
Here.
Mr. Loizell.
Here.
Mr. Masiso.
Here.
Mr. Richard.
Here.
Mr. Stanhope.
Here.
Mr. Stark. Here. Great, I'd like to start the meeting by having a pledge of allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dillon, I hope you had a chance to look at the meeting minutes and like a motion or comments on those.
I move to approve as submitted.
Second.
All those in favor? You name this. I'd like to welcome the newest member that we have on our board, Tom Stanhope, is now our second alternate, so we have a full board and I appreciate your interest in joining us and if you've got any questions, we appreciate it.
Okay.
Don't be afraid to ask them as we go along because a lot of it's new.
Sure.
And we'll try and explain as we go as well.
Okay.
So welcome aboard.
Do you want to authorize Mr. Rich to vote?
Yes. Right now, we're going to authorize Mr. Richard to vote this evening because we need an alternate, so are you ready for it?
I'm ready.
Alright, I knew you would be. Alright, we're going to start with our first appeal this evening, which is Appeal 2524, practical difficulty appeal from Barbara Foley, 8 First Street, map U47, parcel 61A, and she wants to construct a second garage bay 10 feet from the side property line in the R2 zone. If you could approach, as you have approached the podium, state your name and if you could just explain your appeal to us, and I know you've been here before, so you're used to it by now.
My name is Barbara Foley, I'm the owner of 8 First Street. I was here last month totally unprepared, and I thank you for letting me table last month.
We appreciate it.
I went back, I'm trying to, I currently have a one car garage and I would like to add an extra bay on to my garage to store my second vehicle year round at my home. After last month's meeting, I got together with Mr. Longstaff and we found a lot of information in the original property folder of mine. And at the May meeting, I believe it was you that asked, Mr. Loizell, that asked a question whether any plans had ever been submitted on that property. There hadn't been because the prior owner was never able to build on it. Looking back through the, and I've included that in my packet, the letters to the town, there was a five-year moratorium put on digging up the streets after the sewer project went through, and I confirmed that with Mike Shaw that the, Mr. Giugir, at the time, the director, could do that. I then called the sanitary district and spoke to Dave Hughes, he looked back into the records and said 1989 was when my street was done.
Excellent.
So that proved back my five-year moratorium that they couldn't build to get the water in onto the property.
Okay.
So, and that's in his letter dated May 29, 1991 to the town. We didn't find any response from the town on that letter. So they were, in 1990, they were, couldn't build right when they, from the get-go. So I, in my opinion, I would think that the moratorium on not being able to build, to dig up the street would cause a practical difficulty down the road for any future owner because they couldn't construct a house prior to July 3, 1991, on that lot. So that's what I'm thinking, I feel caused a practical difficulty that I'm facing now because I can't apply for the yard size reduction. My additional information on question four, I added, this is some more notes added from what I've submitted on my last submission. I talked with Sue in the town assessor's office and for taxes, looking at my property, she said a tandem garage and a two-car garage prices out the same, which would be about I also stopped at Caldwell Banker in Cape Elizabeth when I was in the area just to talk to a real estate agent for some advice on where I could do some research on tandem garages and values and things like that, and they didn't have anything, and I explained what I was doing, and the broker said that it wasn't, a tandem garage wasn't practical. And she suggested that I call Beacon Appraisal, which I did. She said they can give you prices for when somebody goes to the bank to get the loan, what the appraisal value would be, and I spoke to Chris at Beacon Appraisal, and he said the contributing value for a tandem garage is 2,000, and a conventional two-car garage can be anywhere from 5,000 to 7,500 dollars. Saying, and he also said marketability for a tandem is less than conventional two-car wide garages. Then my contractor and I got together and we did some measuring out in the back of my house and everything, and my slope that goes off the back of my, in my backyard, he said it's roughly about a four-foot slope off, and to build up cotton walls and everything to bring, to make the tandem, it's more expensive than going side by side where the ground is pretty much level. And in my packet, I included a picture of, my backyard is fenced in, and you can see, I have a panel, and then the next one drops down, so you can see that my lot does drop in the back and slip down, and I also have drainage issues that drain, how it drains off, so that would also be more grading to make sure the drainage doesn't affect anybody on either side of me, and since my house was constructed, my neighbors put an accessory unit on, so that would have to be taken in as a factor to not to flood her out or cause her water issues.
And as I face the front of your home, is it to the left?
Yes.
The owner to the left has an accessory unit?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, and she has no opposition to it. So the previous owner, he just wanted to build the house on there to take care of his grandfather, and unfortunately, his grandfather passed away before he could do anything, so he in turn sold the lot to me.
Okay. Is there anything else you wanted to add? We heard this case last month.
Yes.
And Mr. Richard, I think you were here as well?
I was.
And were you voting last month or not?
I was.
Okay, and it looks like we have our permanent member, so you're going to have to step back and you will be alternate again.
I was ready to.
I know, maybe next time.
So it's just, to do a tandem garage, economically, to me, it's not feasible. I would take, it would cost me more to build it, I wouldn't get as much back in resale value, and it would be harder to market. And anybody, you know, I know you guys can't take personal opinions into this, but you figure people out looking for a car, a house, and it says two-car garage, they want side by side, they don't want one behind the other, and if you find that you have two houses, one with a tandem and one with a two-car, within somebody's price range and comparable that they could choose either one, they're going to go for the side by sides.
Mr. Chairman, could I have any questions?
Well, if you just give me one minute. Mr. Dillon, you were not here last week, last month, that's correct?
Correct.
Have you had a chance to look back through the notes and feel comfortable in that you understand?
I have, and I did.
Okay.
Thank you.
So we won't have to repeat what we did from last meeting? Okay, go right ahead.
I just would like you to address the drainage issue a little bit. You say there's a drainage issue on the lot, does that include the entire lot or the back of the house, or where's your drainage problem?
Basically, it's in the back. In the wintertime, behind my back panels, fence, there's like a river that goes almost through there. We had a drainage project put in a few years ago, and if we get a heavy rain, I have, I'm one of the few houses probably in the neighborhood that has the drainage tiles, and I can see from my kitchen window where my tiles come out and where it drains into. And one of my corner fence posts, we didn't even, we just let the water drain in and put the cement in and then put the post in, so.
So what would, if you did a tandem garage, it's two-car deep, what would that do to that drainage?
We would have to, we would have to compensate for it with grading.
Okay.
And the other thing is, I forgot to mention, the garage, the fence also goes off the back corner of the garage now, the added expense of moving and readjusting the fence is an added expense too, because the way we measured, it doesn't come out to an even panel fencing.
Thank you.
And Mr. Longstaff, do you have any comments on this particular appeal?
No, I think I said everything that I needed to say in the staff comments. I know, I know it's always the temptation of the board to try to redesign a project when it comes to it for you.
Come on now.
Because you want to try to help the appellant, and I think that's admirable, but it's probably not a good practice. It's better to let the applicant or the appellant present their facts and you just decide on both facts.
Certainly.
If you have questions or need other information, as you did last time, to either table and request additional information, that's perfectly appropriate and a good way to do it. I'd just ask the board to refrain from trying to re-engineer the project on one site here because it's really not a, not your job to do that.
Certainly think that's good advice.
And might lead to some other problems down the road.
Yes.
As helpful as it is, or you think it may be, it's really not an appropriate practice. So I just, I would only add that, I think you guys are in the process here of gathering the evidence that you need to make your determinate and stay on that course, and you're doing yourselves.
Certainly, thank you, that advice is appreciated. Looking for questions or comments from the board?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I just had a quick question for Mr. Longstaff. And I don't have my phone with me, which everything comes on, and I apologize for being late.
No problem.
That's it, girl, stop. Did we address that question about whether or not the action taken is something we should be considering or not?
The self-created hardship?
Right.
Yeah, there's actually, I did a little digging and I sought out some legal opinions on self-created hardship, there's actually some case law on that, and I'll hand that out, I've got a little handout I'll give you after the cases are heard, it's really not appropriate to be looking at it at this point, but it's just for reference. But in general, the only, the only information I could find on self-created hardship is that it used to be a standard process in this state that if an owner bought a lot that was not, was an existing non-conforming lot in some way, shape, or form, the fact that they bought the lot in that shape or form automatically would prevent them basically from ever being granted a variance on that lot. That tact changed at some point in and around the early 90s, I believe, in that the courts over, sort of overturned that whole theory and said that just because someone bought the lot and therefore should know about the non-compliance of that lot, doesn't necessarily preclude them from being granted a variance going forward. That was a big change in the way that zoning boards could weigh the evidence, because before, it was just an automatic no, even though they could appeal, you, no zoning board would approve. The courts ruled that that was no longer the case and that that knowledge was only one facet, one part of your fact finding. It didn't, it didn't automatically preclude the granting of a variance, but neither did it make it any easier to get the variance.
Okay.
That's really the only thing I could find on self-created hardship.
And did they talk about intent, or did you see any legal bias around intent when you were doing your research, that you could tell?
No.
Okay.
No, I mean, and I think really self-created, you know, self-created hardship was pretty much limited to, it wasn't limited, I think the question last time was, does a lifestyle change, or something that you do in your life, like purchase a car?
Mm-hmm.
You know, is that a self-created hardship? I don't think that, it doesn't seem like that's ever been a real major factor, it's more in what are you going to do with the structure? You know, so it's pretty much limited to the structure or the use of the land.
Not the circumstances.
It's not your habits, not your personal habits or personal choices as far as whether you're going to have horses, pigs, cars, you know, that kind of thing, it's more to do with the space involved and requirements of the lot and what you want to do with the structure.
So we can't punish the applicant for buying a second car?
You can try, but I don't think you'd have the.
You know what my response would be to that?
I think I do.
Life can be a practical difficulty.
So should we, base point to what you're saying is we shouldn't even be considering the fact that she purchased another car unless she needs to have a two-car garage because she did that, we get, we need to limit it to what the structure has? Is that what I'm hearing?
I think that's the intent behind it.
The intent, I mean, there's no hard and fast rule on it, you certainly could, the board has the latitude to look at any and all facts that are presented to them. My suggestion, I guess, based on the research that I've done, is that I don't think you should be putting a lot of weight either way on the fact that somebody either chose to purchase a car or didn't choose to purchase a car. Someone could want to have a two-car garage even though they only have one vehicle.
Correct.
Only because it's, it's like most Mainers, we never park our cars in our garage anyway, we've got it full of other stuff.
Right, right.
So they may just want it for that reason, or because it looks, makes the house more stable or makes it look like the other houses on the street, whatever, I mean, there could be any number of reasons. So I don't think that the purchase of a car really should weigh into your decision as to whether or not she's met the practical difficult test.
That was something I was struggling with, the way the question was worded to us.
Yeah, yeah.
And I think I tried to make that point last week about storing stuff in the garage, and I don't, oh, last month, and I don't think I made a very good point around that, so I think that clarification helps.
And if we just revisit the definition of practical difficulty, it is a case where strict application of the dimensional standards of the ordinance to the property for which a variance is sought would both preclude the use of the property which is permitted, a use of the property which is permitted in the zone in which it is located, and also would result in economic, significant economic injury to the applicant. So your job, I guess, is to decide what is significant in this case, because I think the applicant has given you some evidence that is there's some economic ramifications to this. So is it certain, is it significant enough, I guess would be one way you might want to look at this, and also is it precluding her the use of a property, a use of the property that is permitted in the district? Keeping in mind that she already is using the property in that way.
Right.
It's more of an expansion of that already underway use that she has, that's a terrible way to state that, but.
I know what you mean.
Get my drift.
Yep. Mr. Crockett, oh, excuse me, yes, Mr. Misiso.
So with all that, what does strict application mean? Two out of the five, one out of the five, five out of the five? What does strict application mean?
Could you give me some more information around your question?
Yeah, so it says, the ordinance, excuse me.
Yep.
When strict application of the provisions of the ordinance would create a practical difficulty, then we have one, two, three, four, three would be a practical difficulty not a result of the action taken. So what does strict mean?
It means, well, we still, our voting is still around the seven questions, right? And if you vote no on any one of those questions, you have to vote no overall, is what it comes down to. That's our requirement. Now, the question in part was around that one, let me see which one it was, item number... Four, was it?
It was three and four that you were really hammering on.
Right, it was four for me, but I think your question was more around three, right?
Well, which happens all the time.
Which is, the practical difficulty is not the result of an action taken by the applicant or a prior owner. And you're saying by buying a car created a situation where now she's got to have a variance. I think that was around item number three. And the question is, really comes down to your judgment, do you think, again, it's based on the information that we got from the town, and they're saying it doesn't appear that buying the car created the situation, that the situation could be there by someone saying, I want a second garage or a two-car garage now over one, and that situation really isn't created by the car, it could be just the circumstance, you want a second garage, a second opening for a garage. So I think it's pretty clear that, in my opinion, the practical difficulty was not created by this applicant, she now wants a second door or a second garage or a larger garage. And the question is, is the practical difficulty a result of the action taken by the applicant? I don't think so. I don't think it's as a result of her buying that car, and I think it was stated by the town pretty clear that that's not the intent behind that question.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Maybe I can help with that clarification.
Certainly.
An example of self-created hardship would be someone who had a large lot and decided to build their house in the middle of a lot, and if they had not done that, could have split it and made two lots.
Made two lots.
Now want permission from the zoning board to create a non-conforming lot because their house was cited in the.
Right, that was situated or caused by the applicant.
That might be an example of self-created hardship.
Certainly.
And to Mr. Misiso's question, I think the strict application, talking about zoning standards, not the criteria that you're deciding to base on, strict application of the zoning ordinance would say that you have to be 50 feet back from the sideline of the freeway or whatever, that's what that means, strict application of the zoning ordinance.
Okay, alright, that makes sense.
Not the application of these criteria.
Okay. Sorry, I guess I didn't understand the question, so thank you. So, any other questions or comments from the board? And while you're going through, what I will do is I'll open up the meeting to the public. If anyone wishes to speak to this application, please stand up and seeing no one that's interested, I'm going to close the public portion of the meeting, and we'll go back to the board.
Can I just add one more note?
Certainly.
Question four asks about feasible alternatives.
Yes.
And feasible is an adjective, meaning possible, reasonable, or likely. Reasonable also means non-expensive, so to keep that in mind, the extent for the tandem is more than going with the, getting a variance. That's all.
Yes, thank you. So again, the reason why we had issues with this last time is we wanted the applicant to go back and look at more feasible alternatives, at least that was the biggest one for me. And I think she's now gone back to her contractor, they've discussed it in more detail. There is a larger cost in modification going in depth rather than width. I think based on the layout, the neighbors are not constructed right on the line.
No.
They are pushed back off the line, so it will not visibly look like it's crowded. So I think in this particular case, in my opinion, I think they've gone back and done their reasonable amount of work to prove to us or me, in this case, that there are other feasible alternatives, but they are not feasible enough to make me say no on this particular question. That's me personally, and we have to talk to the other members of the board, but I think you've done your due diligence in doing your homework and.
Thank you.
Searching out your other alternatives. And I appreciate you doing the historical look back as well.
I found it very interesting, even with my boundary survey that Steve Ross did for me, that I don't live in Green Acres, I live in Hudson something, and I'm like, oh, really? So the people behind me are in a different development than I'm in.
And being a board like we are, we're quasi-judicial, which means that we do have to make judgment even though we're not judges, and the more information you bring to the table for us to make that decision certainly helps us, it gives us legal backing in our decisions.
I understand, and I want to work with you on this.
Thank you, thank you.
I think also the information that you brought regarding the appraiser and the Realtors and the fact that people certainly don't want to buy a house, that it's not what they consider normal, like Mr. Chairman said here, when we have enough information to make the decisions, then it makes our job a whole lot easier. So thank you very much for doing all that work and bringing it to us.
And there was an article that I did include in my package the second time about the tandem garages and how people don't want them, the resale value and things like that, and how zoning boards try to make you go that way.
Yeah, and again, our decision cannot be around finances because we have, we have guidelines that say that's really not what we're against and, or for. It's really, we have to make a decision that really has to hold up legally, and it can't be based on finances, but we do empathize with the applicant and we do understand that, but our decision isn't ultimately made on finances. Again, looking at the board for questions, comments, or a motion. Mr. Misiso.
I wasn't here last meeting, but I did watch it on TV.
Okay, thank you.
And the tandem, like Mr. Stark said, I kind of agree with that, that side by side is much better. But there's just three things that I'd like to ask.
Sure.
Were there any neighbors' letters opposing this? I don't remember.
No, there were not.
And this, um.
And we're still going to have to go through the questions?
Oh, yeah.
One by one?
Oh, I thought we were just going to address those two.
No, but.
Oh, okay, then I'll just sit back and.
Okay. Again, if anybody has comments or questions, I'd like to get them out before we start going through that, but we can start going through the questions if you guys are ready. I just want to give you a chance to make sure you get all your opinions stated. Okay, I will start going through the questions, and I will let the applicant address these again, so that we, I know we did it during the last meeting, but I'd like to do it one more time, that way you're on record with the latest information that you've got. First question is, the need for the variance is due to the unique circumstances of the property and not the general conditions in the neighborhood?
Oh.
Yes, and I'm looking for you to give your opinion and your voice on this, so we have you on record for your legal, your side of the story.
Okay, so we're on question.
It's question one?
C1?
Yes. Or A1, excuse me.
The variance is of my, I am, I'm not on a conform, a non-conforming lot.
Okay, yeah, this question, we're, and you may just want to run it off the cuff and I can kind of walk you through it.
Okay.
The question says, the need for the variance is due to the unique circumstances of your property and not the general conditions in the neighborhood.
Okay.
In other words, if everybody in the neighborhood has ledge and you're complaining about ledge, you really have no leg to stand on. So it's about this particular property and what is unique about your property that would make it difficult for you to not have a variance? Like around the width, you're looking for.
Right, the width is, I have eight feet, I have eight feet from my, that side set property line, and I have another five feet, so with everything that I've put on there, I've, I'm restricted down, and I don't have the proper square footage of 20, 2,200, whatever the proper size is now.
Right.
So.
And you were looking for a five-foot variance, is that right, on the side?
Correct.
Okay.
Five feet.
Off the normal fifteen.
And I, the unique circumstances of my property is that it doesn't qualify for yard size reduction.
Okay. Originally? Yeah, matter of fact. And what I'll do is I'll read in what you originally had put in, in the first appeal from last month.
Okay.
Said, I'm requesting the variance due to the width of my property. It's 10 feet wide, the minimum street frontage, my home was constructed on the property according to town setback requirements, and my home and existing garage take up 56 feet in width.
Right.
So that's why you're asking for the variance of five feet, to get the second garage for the two-car garage width on that property.
Correct, right, and to be able to move around and inside the garages, we've addressed, last month we addressed other issues, other ways, but just with the makeup of my current garage and my entrance into my home, I need the five feet to be able to move around.
Any questions or comments from the board? I'd like to go down the line, if you don't mind, and get your opinion, starting with Mr. Crockett.
I would agree with that. I agree as well, it's the property, it's not the neighborhood.
Mr. Chair.
Yeah, I agree with that, and I think that, I think that she did, I would like to make one correction in here that the.
Certainly.
It is 101 feet wide instead of 10 feet.
Oh, excuse me, I just read that, sorry.
I saw that too, I'm like.
I have to get my glasses calibrated?
But yes, I'm in agreement.
Thank you. And I agree as well, it is the circumstance of this property and not general conditions in the neighborhood.
When was the house built?
1996.
And when did the. And when did the fifteen-foot setback go into effect?
Fifties.
I was gonna say, a long time ago.
Since the eighties, eighty-five, something like that?
No, fifties. I believe the gentleman that...
Five setbacks, in the fifties?
The gentleman, when he submitted his kind of plot plan to the town, he did the fifteen-foot setbacks, and that was in nineteen ninety.
Okay, I agree with that, number one.
All those in favor with question one? It's unanimous. Question two, the granting of the variance will not produce an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood, and will not have an unreasonably detrimental effect on either the neighborhood, the fair market value of the abutting properties. And you answered last, expanding my garage from one to two cars will not produce any undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood. There is a mix of homes with one or two-car garages, the expansion from one to two-car would not have a detrimental effect either in the use or fair market value of the abutting properties, and the addition will only be for storage of a second vehicle.
That is correct, I, it's gonna look like any other home on the street that has a two-car garage or one car, it's not gonna stand out.
Okay. Gentlemen? Starting with Mr. Crockett?
I would agree.
I agree with that as well.
I agree.
Yes, I agree completely on it.
Again, it fits in with the character, I agree as well.
I agree also with it.
All those in favor on question two? Unanimous. The practical difficulty is not a result of the action taken by the applicant or a prior owner. And your answer there was, I don't believe that the practical difficulty is a result of my actions or a previous owner. Previous owner created a lot with minimum road frontage from the adjacent lot, I built on the lot per town code.
Right, and as I explained earlier in my comments, that I, my opinion is that the practical difficulty is caused by the five-year moratorium that was put on digging up the roads back in nineteen eighty-nine that precluded the previous owner from building his home.
Mr. Chairman, she has revised answers to the question.
She had, and that is on record, that is part of your appeal, so...
Oh, okay.
Thank you. Any questions or comments on item three? I think the discussion that we had this evening clarifies, and I think you are okay on that one as well, so... Gentlemen?
I would say I agree with it now, from the clarification from the town that
Good.
The vehicle wasn't...
Mr. Dillon?
I agree with that, the clarification earlier, it was a good discussion, I appreciate it.
Mr. Stanhall?
I agree from what I've heard from this meeting, and I've been here last month.
I'm in agreement.
I'm in agreement as well, I think it's, there's no question.
I'm in agreement, but I'm gonna always have a problem with that number three, but it was explained properly tonight, but I reserve my judgment for the next time someone has a problem.
It could change. Mr. Richard?
I would agree as well.
Okay, all those in favor? That's unanimous. Item four, no other feasible alternative, alternative is available to the applicant except a variance. And again, I think you updated that answer as well.
Yes, I did, that's my reapplication, would you like me to read it?
You certainly can, why not?
Okay. Okay, one of the suggestions at the last meeting was a portable garage, and they are approximately ten feet by seventeen feet, which would not fit beside the garage. Also storing a vehicle on grass for a long period of time can cause damage to the underside and allow for animals to nest inside the vehicle. A portable garage sitting beside the driveway wouldn't look good in the neighborhood of nicely kept homes. Staying within the side setback allows for a twenty-two-foot garage, including foundation and exterior wall, factoring in the forty-inch stairway into the home, the foundation wall, and using a sixteen-foot door, there is not enough room for two vehicles and clearance for door openings and passage through the garage. And then tandem garage requires more linear feet of foundation and up, an eight to ten feet concrete wall due to the slope in the back of my home. It will also require fifty percent more compacted gravel fill due to the wall depth, much more grading for proper drainage around the current structure and not to affect the butters. The roof line direction change will require more materials, which, with the reduced sunlight on the back of the house creating a valley, with the different roof line could lead to moisture or ice issues. Then there is the issue of marketability and resale value, the resale value and marketability of the tandem garage versus a standard car garage is much lower. The town still taxes you the same, but when appraised for bank, when selling the property, the value added is considerably different. Building a tandem garage would be a significant economic impact on the value of the home. Also, if the tandem garage was built, this could have a detrimental effect on the fair market value of abutting properties, since a tandem has less value but considered a two-car garage and was used as a comparable sole property in an appraisal, it could bring the butters' value down.
Gentlemen?
This is still a struggling point.
Mm-hmm.
Mr. Longstaff, am I correct, my assumption on this, that a feasible alternative would be not to build a garage? Or am I not correct on that?
Well, I think you're really trying to say, is there any feasible alternative in constructing this space that would be compliant with the zoning ordinance? I mean, yes, obviously not doing anything would be here right now.
It's always an alternative, that's correct.
But I think when you're applying the feasible alternative, you're looking for a different way to accomplish the same thing that they're requesting the variance for, without having to have a variance.
So, we're applying our question to the building of the garage, as far as a feasible alternative, as opposed to not just building one?
Right, with the understanding that if she didn't do it, then she obviously
Doesn't need a variance, right.
And it wouldn't need a variance. So yeah, that's a feasible alternative, but it's not, it's not really addressing this request.
With that clarification, I would agree, I just didn't know what letter of the law we were holding to for the feasible alternative, if we were saying a feasible alternative would be just park the garage, the car outside and not build the garage? But if we're looking at it on the structure, as to the question, then I would agree that there's no feasible alternative.
Well, I mean, in effect, that would be a feasible alternative, but I think what you're really looking for is there any way to do what she wants to do in compliance with the ordinance? And if there is, then doing nothing is the only feasible alternative.
Again, I think in this case, I'm, the alternatives that they have reviewed for me is parking vehicles outside, doing a front-to-back garage arrangement, or the side-to-side, those are the feasible alternatives. I don't really consider doing nothing as an alternative in this case, so it's really, are the other feasible alternatives, which is parking outside or parking front-to-back, are those really viable? And in my opinion, I think the applicant here has shown that she's done her due diligence, she's reviewed those alternatives, and I don't think it's viable in this point. It can be done? Is it really practical? I don't think so, in my opinion.
Yeah, it's just, it's one that we always struggle with, the feasible alternative.
Certainly, certainly.
Because technically there is, we're applying it to what she wants to do with her request, then no, there's not based upon information she's applied.
Correct. I think, and I think based on what we've done as a board, in historically over the last, recent history, I think it would fall in line with what we've done in the past. Unless we uncovered some additional information, which would be possible in the future, that could change that particular viewpoint on how we decide on this particular question. And that may be the case in the near future. Yes, sir?
In regards to the tandem, because of the slope, the grading, it's gonna cost a lot more, did you have a rough estimate on that?
He didn't get into giving me prices, he's just going down and just doing the linear footage and things like that. And we've measured out, we took from the back corner of the garage where it comes out, and went down to twenty-four feet, and it was eight, at least eight feet that would be showing above the ground, and you need a four-foot frost wall, so you're talking twelve feet of concrete.
Yeah.
Fourteen by twenty-four.
As well as the affected drainage in the back?
Right.
The slow blocking lot?
Right, right, yeah, and it, we got, we get heavy rain Friday, and I was down there last night, and it's still squishing in the back, the back of my yard.
I'm totally in agreement with that, I was just curious if those are for you.
Mr. Sturrock?
I...
Oh, excuse me, Mr. Stanhall?
Oh, that's okay. The only thing I noticed was, the only thing the board maybe should look at is within, to stay within the ordinance, and the setback would be a twenty-two-foot garage, I mean, that would almost be an alternative, you know, feasible alternative. Granted, the applicant doesn't wanna do that, but that would be a feasible alternative in my view, because that would stay within the ordinance, and she would be getting a bigger garage and so forth, but that's just something I think should be looked at, you know. Not saying it should be, you know, strong, but the board probably should look at as a feasible alternative.
And I think the applicant did do that during the last meeting?
Yeah, the question asked, I think there was a stairway or something.
There's a three, almost four feet of stair porch inside my garage, so that, the current garage is fourteen feet right now, you chop three feet right off of that because of the stairs, so even twenty-two, I'm down, I'm down under, that's why I did address it in the revised thing, that twenty, you're not gonna be able to
Open the doors.
Open the doors. And move around vehicles.
If there wasn't an entry from the garage, it'd be a different story, but there's a house entry from the garage.
Right, and I've even looked at that, turning the stairs around, something moving that door, but there's just not enough room in front of that to store a vehicle.
And if you narrow up that, that landing platform to less than four feet, then I think you're gonna run into compliance issues from a, getting a door in there.
Mr. Longstaff and I discussed the code, and that, my stairs are right at code.
Right.
So, that, you know, it would gain me a couple of inches if we really brought it down, I can't remember what we talked about, but it's just inches, it's not, gonna give me feet.
Does that help?
It does.
Okay. Mr. Sturrock? I'm sorry.
The only question I would have, then, would you be willing to eliminate those stairs?
I can't get into my kitchen, my back door.
Oh, I see, so...
Yeah, it's the entry into my, my...
Okay.
It's like my back door into my house, only it's inside the garage.
I understand.
Yep.
Yeah.
Could you climb out a window?
I got a, I got a sliding glass door, I can probably jump out.
There you go.
You know, is, is, Mr. Longstaff, is that code?
I'll have her block the door.
There you go. Mr. Sturrock?
No, I, with the, with the additional information provided, I'm good with it, I agree.
Thank you.
I'm in agreement, I think the applicant's proved in their point. Mr. Richard?
I agree, I think the word feasible, she explained that nicely, and costs certainly weighs into it, so I agree.
I agree also.
All those in favor on question four? Again, unanimous. Question five, the granting of the variance will not result in bringing the applicant's property more nearly into conformance with the surrounding properties.
Um...
And I, I'm thinking that your answer didn't change from the last...
No, it didn't, it didn't change from the last, three and four were the only ones that I really changed my, my answer.
Okay, I'll read it in anyways, 'cause I've got it from, this, this being an older neighborhood, some homes set closer to the street than, than mine, a majority of the homes sit on larger lots, there's no effect on the conformance with surrounding properties. Any comments from the board, or... Okay? Opinions?
I agree with Stanhall.
Okay?
Agreed.
I'm in agreement on that.
I'm in agreement as well.
And there was no neighbor's letters, and being ten feet, does that give access to the back part of the property if need be, I mean...
It did, based on the drawing that we had.
Yes, I do, I still, still have ten feet plus, you know, if it was an emergency situation, they could come in through my neighbor's driveway and still access the backyard.
I agree with that thing.
All those in favor on question five? Again, unanimous. Six, the granting of the variance will not have an unreasonably, unreasonably adverse effect on the natural environment.
Answer didn't change, and I don't see any effect on the natural environment, it will be as it is.
Yeah, okay. Gentlemen?
I guess, I guess my question on that now, based upon what the applicant has brought up, is the wetness behind there, what, are we looking at anything additional from building this other ten bay, that we're gonna be more, I mean, you're gonna be a lot less ground to absorb the water and everything, and we're gonna be looking at some other detrimental effect to this?
Certainly, I think, and again, this is my opinion, by going deeper in the lot, you're gonna put more slope on the lot to that drainage area, which is gonna make it run off faster, less time to absorb, so looking at the alternatives, going wider to me is better, because it will give it more time to soak in, and as opposed to just run off to that soft area that she now has in the back. So, and I think by adding the additional fill that it would take to go deeper, it's gonna make that slope even higher going towards the back, towards that drainage area, so I think it's gonna make the condition worse. So I think by picking the alternative that she's gone with, the drainage in that property would be the best case, not the worst case.
And what is the closest neighbor? You had said someone was fairly close to you on one side, is that the side that the garage is gonna expand out onto, or is that the other side? Where someone had built a...
Yes, yes, um...
Which side?
I think in my original packet, there's a street view of my home, and I can, if you wanna see it, I can walk over, you can see approximately how close she is.
And that's the property to the right as you face from the front?
Left. Where the garage is going over?
No, face, to, when you're facing my garage, it's the property to the left.
Right, but there's clearance between your garage and the structures on the neighbors'.
Oh, yeah, oh yeah, more, she's within fifteen feet side back, if not more, on her side, and...
Right, and the person to the right of you, if anything, was closer or not?
They're higher than me.
Okay.
So it all drains down...
Okay.
Down the street, the street slopes down.
Okay.
I would agree, based upon the information.
I agree as well.
Agree with the chairman's comments.
Yes, I'm in agreement as well.
Clearly am as well.
I agree also.
All those in favor on question six? Unanimous again. And question seven, the property's not located in a shoreline zone, so that one does not apply to your property.
No, no, I...
I'll go right by that one.
My house was built in the flood of ninety-six, and I didn't have any water in the basement.
Okay, so I'll go right to the overall vote on the property, or I'd like to hear a motion from the board?
Move to approve, uh, appeal number twenty-five, twenty-four, as it's stated.
Second?
All those in favor? Unanimous. Thank you and good luck.
Thank you very much.
Thanks again for, for all your diligence on getting it.
I wish I had known last month, I didn't know what I was getting into.
You did a great job.
Yes.
I tried to warn you.
How difficult we can be? Yeah, thank you. Most people, sometimes we don't, so...
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. Second appeal and final appeal of the evening is appeal twenty-five, twenty-seven, a special exception appeal for David Densmore of Sixth Moose Creek Lane, access to parcel R26, parcel eighteen C, to operate a home occupation for an in-home catering business in our home. If you'd like to approach, state your name, and give us a brief, uh, name and your address, and give us a brief description of your appeal.
Hi, I'm Dave Densmore, I live at Sixth Moose Creek Lane in Scarborough, and I would like to propose a, that I could open a home catering business using the existing accessory apartment. We're making no changes to the apartment, we are going to use the existing appliances. The business will be a primary baked breads, baked goods, salads, and desserts. Our plan is to deliver all the food to the customers, we will, we may have an occasional pickup, but it will be delivered with very minimal to, no traffic, no additional traffic to the road. We are not planning to have any signage for the business.
I'm Mary Jo Densmore.
Thank you for getting up there as well. It's all good to have support. Any questions from the board? Okay, I'll go to the town. Can you give me any information, or would you like to give us any information? I know you've summarized.
Sure. Yeah, just as some background, Mr. Densmore was granted an appeal, uh, number 2225 on November 10th, 2004, for an accessory at 6 Moose Creek Lane. The accessory unit was permitted by special exception at that time, as was required by ordinance. Uh, we, we no longer require the zoning board to, to approve accessory units. We can do that in the department now. So the accessory unit is not currently occupied.
No, it's not.
And, and so the applicant wishes to conduct that business using the infrastructure that's there in the accessory unit. In doing so, he would then vacate the ability to call that an accessory unit. It would become his home occupation, because there's no way he could do both, nor does he intend to.
And, and in order to go back to that, he would have to come back before the board to get approval?
Um, actually, in order to go back to having an accessory unit, should he ever wish to do that, not do the catering business, we could then issue that permit in-house. He wouldn't have to come back before.
Okay, good, thank you.
But, but he can't operate both of them at the same time. One of the reasons for that is that his onsite septic, septic system, his subsurface wastewater disposal system, is sized adequately for the accessory unit, which also is adequate for the bakery part of his business, but not adequate for both. So he's limited in capacity in his, in his subsurface wastewater. So, and it only makes sense to do it. The other reason that it's important is that he needs to count all of that area in order to meet the 20% limit on the home occupation, uh, which he couldn't meet if he was just taking 20% of the accessory unit. So for all of those reasons, he's basically here to say, I'm vacating the accessory unit in favor of the home occupation, which meets the space and bulk criteria for that. The board needs to, needs to know that as part of their decision-making process.
Few questions that I have with these kind of businesses, is how are you going to get your raw products? How many deliveries do you expect a week or months?
Going to pick them up.
We're picking them up, yeah.
Okay. And you're going to do majority deliveries out of the home to bring them to your clients?
Yeah, that's, that's the intent. We're not planning on having like a huge catering business. It's more of like home parties for people, and then just delivering the food to them.
And you don't think people are going to be picking up?
You know, maybe they'll come down for like a loaf of bread if I do a loaf of stuff, but it's not, it's real minimal. It's more of us going to deliver to people.
And what I'd like is if, because if you're going to go that way, if you say you're not going to have people coming, that's one thing.
Okay.
But if you believe it could happen, you ought to give us an idea of what you think the volume might be, so that we have it on record.
I think that the volume would be two to 10 people possibly a week.
Okay, that's-
If that.
Nope, that's good.
Yeah.
Because then we, now we have something to measure by.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. Any questions from the board or comments from the board? Again, this is, appears to me to be pretty straightforward. You have every right to have an in-home business. Nice part about this is you've already got the space.
Yeah, it's great.
And it, and it meets your needs, so-
Yeah.
That's good for you. That makes, certainly makes it financially easier for you.
Well, that is one of the big things for us, right? I mean, we built the apartment when my dad was alive, and he lived with us until he passed away, and we thought, well, why don't we use this space instead of trying to rent someplace somewhere?
Right, so, so good for you folks.
Yeah.
And of course, you know you have to do your normal permitting and all that stuff.
Absolutely, yeah, that's next step.
Yep, good, good for you. And again, I, I look at it as pretty straightforward. They don't have a lot of issues with traffic, which is going to be beneficial. And it's going to be delivered out of the home, so you're not going to have, you know, not going to have a lot of-
And we're on a private road, so we're the only house on the road.
And you are not requesting a sign?
No, no.
Not seeing any questions from the board. I'm going to open up to the public for any questions or comments. Seeing there's no one that's here to speak to this, we will close that back. One thing I didn't ask on the last appeal, but I will ask on this one, are there any letters from the public? Okay, so there's no public comic on, comment on this. We can start going through the questions if there's no questions or comments from the board?
They do get one sign with the accessory unit, right?
They, uh, with their home occupation?
Yes, I mean, with the home occupation, I'm sorry.
Is it three by five?
Uh, I think so for them.
Okay, there, if you, if you did choose to have a sign, that would be in your, your right to do so.
Okay.
And again, it just has to meet the criteria, and it's a certain size, and I think we're-
And somebody feet from-
Right, in, in location, so.
Okay.
Uh, that is in your right, and if you want to do that, just let us know.
All right.
Okay.
I have a question here, to the building inspector. When someone does something like this, they're going to be baking in there, do you have to go in and check the electrical out prior to this?
No.
Um, not particularly, because it's already existing.
As a, as a home, no?
It's not something they're installing.
As a home, not a business.
But they're, they're baking, it's the oven. They're going to have a food handler's license, and as a food, part of the food handler's license, they're going to get a state inspection for the stove and all of the baking stuff. Electrical-
But the, the state doesn't check the electrical?
Sure they do. They'll check the entire kitchen.
But it won't be any different than the property, right?
Is there a specific concern that you're trying to-
Well, no, I mean, if they're going to, I mean, if you've got an oven in your, in your house, I mean, if they, if they're in a catering business, and it takes off, and they don't change anything, and they're going to a bigger oven, does the building inspector get involved via the food handler? How does it, how does it work? Kind of educate me on it.
There's-
So, so once they get, there's-
An existing facility, they're not, they're not pulling a building permit for anything. So there's no, there's, they're going to bake in the oven that's in the facility. It's already there, it's been used. There's no, no reason for us to be in there for that. If they're doing a remodel and changing those appliances, then we would go in and inspect that, yes. If they were adding new electrical or more electrical outlets, they would have to pull an electrical permit. We would go in and inspect that.
So as the business got bigger and they needed something bigger, they'd have to come back?
Right now, everything is existing. There's no, nothing for us to inspect.
Okay.
Until they pull a permit for something new or additional.
What I'll do is we'll start going through the questions for, for special exception, and I see that you've given answers to the special exception questions. What I'll let you do is discuss those, or you can, they're already on record in your package, so you can basically summarize what you said-
Okay.
And, and abridge it if you'd like to.
Okay.
The first question is A, the proposed use will not create unsanitary or unhealthful conditions by reason of sewage disposal, emissions to the air, water, or other aspects of design of our, or operation.
No, it will not. We're just using it as a small business.
And we'll come back and we'll, again, maybe I'm simplifying it, and I want to know your opinions. I, I think we can go over the overall answers and do a summary vote at the end. I don't think we need to go through the individual questions, if you guys are on the board, or you folks on the board are okay with that.
If I have a question, I'll raise it.
Please do. Uh, the second question, is proposed use will not create unsafe vehicular or pedestrian traffic conditions when added to the existing or foreseeable traffic in its vicinity?
No, it will not.
Okay, again, you, you stated on record, you said worst case eight or 10 per week.
Yeah.
I think that's a reasonable volume for an in-home business, and I don't see any issues with that myself. The proposed use will not create public safety problems, which would be substantially different from those created by existing uses in the neighborhood, or require substantially greater degree of municipal fire or police protection than existing uses in the neighborhood.
Yeah, no, it won't be, we're, we're the only two living in the house, and we'll be the only two working.
And you're not changing any of the equipment, so I don't think it creates any more risk to fire. Proposed use will not result in sedimentation or erosion, or have an adverse effect of the water supplies?
No, it will not. We're using existing, and we have, as Brian stated, we have enough, the septic's fine.
And the proposed use will be compatible with existing uses in the neighborhood with respect to the physical size, visual impact, intensity of use, proximity to the structures, or density of development?
Right, there's no difference. It looks like every other home.
Correct, and you're not changing that-
I'm not changing it.
From current. If located in the shoreline zone, and I don't believe you are-
No, we're not.
So that one does not apply. Uh, applicant has sufficient right, title or interest in the site proposed, used to be carried out the proposed use.
Yes.
In other words, if we put something on you as a big restriction, financially, you are willing to do what we ask. Okay. Uh, the applicant has the technical and financial ability to meet the standards of this section, comply with the conditions imposed by the board.
Yes.
And the proposed use will be compatible with the existing uses in the neighborhood with respect to generation of noise and hours of operation.
Yes.
And that's one thing that we did, did not ask you, is what do you plan on running for hours?
During the day, you know, normal, standard, probably-
Eight to five.
Eight to five, you know.
Eight to five, or-
Yeah.
Could be earlier.
Yeah, but not at night.
Or not, no.
We generally ask for specific timeframes when we're doing a home occupation.
Okay, okay, so we would say eight to five.
What, what would be the latest that you would allow you to pick up from a customer?
I hadn't really thought about that.
Six?
Yeah, maybe six.
Okay.
Yeah.
Still reasonable.
So eight to six is a reasonable envelope for you?
Yeah, it is.
Okay.
That, that eight to six, that's just for people to come pick stuff up, or total baking?
Or else they deliver, yeah.
Right, I, I think they can be in operation eight to six. I think that's fair. They could still be baking at that point.
But, I mean, they couldn't start at six in the morning?
It's-
No reasoning could.
There is no reasoning. It's all internally used, so.
I'm just asking, because we're putting a timeframe on it.
Yeah, I don't think a timeframe needs to be found. Most bakers bake at four in the morning.
And, and when I say, when I say hours of operation, it's, it's people coming in and going.
Yeah, there would be no one early in the-
You can, you certainly could wake up at four and start baking if you chose to.
We might bake earlier, but.
And I don't think anybody from the town's going to be coming down there at four o'clock to check to see if you're baking.
If they do, they can have a slice.
I'll be on the doorstep.
All right.
Uh, that, that was the question. So, any comments from the board, or looking for a motion?
Move to approve, appeal 252-
I gotta, I gotta, wait a minute.
Yes, sir.
Some, some, a couple of things.
Sure.
Being a small business owner, as I am, now that you're going to have the public, you're inviting the public into your home as a business, I recommend you talk to your homeowner's insurance and straighten that out.
I have that on the list.
Perfect.
I do.